Good evening, welcome to the December 6, 2021 Merrimack School Board meeting. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we are in the public comments, public participation section of the meeting. I will go through my list pretty quickly. First of all, we do have public comment at sau26.org for anybody at home that wishes to send in. We may not get to it at the beginning of this meeting, depending on when it comes in, but we do have time at the end. Again, that's public comment at sau26.org. We do plan to read either all or nothing, all of them or none of them. So if we become, have too many emails, they become too voluminous, then we will just not read all of them, but regardless, we would put them in the public comment section of the record or the rec, the meeting record that we would put online. Again, please remember we are all neighbors, we are in the same community. Be kind, be clear and concise, please. Whether you're in person or via an email, please keep your comments concise and be clear about what you are asking of the board. Please also direct your comments directly to the board. Also, this is a business meeting, speaking out of turn, interrupting people will not be allowed, please be respectful in your comments, keeping in mind again that we are all neighbors. When residents do come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. If you are a student, please state your first name only and just let us know that you're a student. We will have time allocated, we have time allocated for our public comments. Looks like we have about 20 minutes. And then if there's, for any reason, there's more public comments than what we can read, we will just move them to the end. Lastly, we just will not allow any public disparagement of any of our district employees or school board members. So I will go ahead and open up the micro, microphone. We will also alternate between any at-home comments and those in the room, but we will start with anyone in the room that would like to address the school board.
Naomi Halter, 10 Everest Drive. At the end of the last regular meeting, so like three weeks ago now, Board Member Roth House just briefly mentioned the idea of having a community task force or a group of parents who could help provide input on the school's direction. And I wanted to say that I think that's an awesome idea and I'm super excited to help out with that if and when it becomes a reality. I know we do have some, some, like a slightly higher dropout rate than some surrounding towns and some issues with reading fluency at the elementary level. And those are issues that are important and I'm excited to see that the board is interested to address them and wants the community to help. Thank you.
Shannon?
So this was from last meeting, it did not make it before we closed business, and that is from Elizabeth Schalk, 9 Cassie Lane. To whom it may concern, please consider removing the opt-out option for masking. Numbers are worse, cases are up. We need to go back to mandatory masking in our district. We have more cases and less students than surrounding towns. According to WMUR, the seven-day average of daily new cases has risen to 879, the highest it has been during the pandemic. 25.4% were in children under 18. Merrimack currently has 175 active, 2,850 total, in parentheses, 25 new as of today. We need to protect our staff and students, regards Elizabeth Schalk. And again, that was from November 18th. We have three more today. And first is, my name is Joanne Grobecker, 27 Craig Drive, and I want to thank the district for the focus on literacy and handwriting as a way to address learning loss from a pandemic and strengthen kids, and strengthen skills for all kids. I want to praise the accessible and inclusive playground plans for TFS. The wheelchair picnic tables are at TFS and it's great to have the accessible and inclusive space for all kids available in our community. I'm happy to see the sensory hallway created at MES does utilize by students who receive physical therapy services as well as students who need to regulate themselves before entering class. I praise the district for the creation of the standards-based report card. Thank you for the focus on academics in spite of being in a pandemic. I appreciate the subpay being raised to $100, but it is still less than the surrounding districts. Most districts are paying 115 to 150 a day. Merrimack needs to pay a competitive substitute teacher rate to attract and retain substitutes. As well as, as well, going into budget season, I hope Merrimack can offer a competitive rate to retain and recruit educators. I was grateful the district could bring Polly Bath to have an open Zoom with parents in November. Polly Bath worked at the Merrimack School District and is now a nationally renowned speaker on student behavior. It was great having her present and answer parent questions on student behavior and executive functioning. I am here for a strong public education system that benefits all kids. Thank you to teachers, therapists and parents for all you do every day. Respectfully, Joanne Grobecker. Next is Brian Townsend, 5 Mary Meeting Drive. There's one more after this.
Did we want to see if anyone else wants to speak?
Sorry, I was on a roll.
Anyone else like to address the board, so we can go back and forth? Sorry, Shannon.
Thought they were queuing up, sorry.
Hi, Robbie Reisman, Iris Drive. Wanted to begin by thanking the school district for setting up the vaccine clinic. Think that's a great resource for, for students, for folks who need the vaccine. And also to thank the board for setting up that policy for masking in the last meeting that was based on numbers and, you know, data that actually sort of sets some markers. Think it's, it's great to have something like that in place now. And as well, I'm excited about the, you know, the committee that Board Member Roth House brought up, the, the parent participation one that where we potentially have some input and can collaborate. That was actually a good reminder. And, oh, also wanted to put in my plug for, for the teacher contract coming up. Definitely want us to be able to retain and obtain, I guess, some of the, our, our prime picks, top choices, so hoping we can be competitive with surrounding towns. And I don't know the exact numbers, but obviously we want the best teachers for our kids. And I think, yeah, I think that was about it. Thank you very much.
Back to you, Shannon.
Brian Townsend, 5 Mary Meeting Drive. Dear Merrimack School Board, we want to thank you for taking a step in the right direction at last month's meeting in regards to the mask policy. We are writing to ask that it further be strengthened for the safety of our students and staff. Although thankfully, the numbers in our schools have been decreasing and no schools are currently under a mask mandate, we would like you to consider adding a two-week mask mandate for individual classrooms with a cluster of COVID-19. New Hampshire DHHS defines a cluster as three or more individuals confirmed with COVID-19 who are part of a related group of individuals, example, classroom, who have had the potential to transmit infection to each other through close contact. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully, Brian Townsend.
Anyone else?
Hello, this is very short. Ken Martin, Woodward Road. And I just want to make sure it's on the record for the music teachers in our district, the incredible achievement that happened over just before Thanksgiving break where 18 Merrimack High School students got accepted into the All-State Music Festival. I think there are three other schools in this, school districts in the state that came even close to that. My own school district got one into that festival. So that is just such a huge testament to our music education staff in this town. And of course, we can go back decades to see the research between high-quality music education and how it correlates with math scores, how it correlates with reading scores, with writing scores, that it's just, it, it's a win-win for everybody when you see numbers like that. So not only is that such a huge achievement, but we as a town need to be very proud of that, in my opinion. And hopefully, as we get into the budget process, looking at contracts, looking at what programs to, to fund, I hope that is a top priority because the teachers in that department have made that a top priority for our schools. And I, I hope we thank them and, and show them how much we appreciate that in the process. Thanks.
Thank you. Back to you, Shannon.
And this is from Nicole Arp, 329 Daniel Webster Highway. A quote from Governor Sununu at www.mychamplainvalley.com regarding mask policies. Quote, "I'm a believer that whatever the schools decide, if they're listening to parents, if they're getting the right input, they're not just defaulting to being as restrictive as we can be for the sake of being restrictive," said Governor Sununu, "but really looking at the dynamics of how to get the best education in the classroom. When we make sure schools have all of the flexibility to do that, we are very, very successful in this state." After listening to and participating in these school board meetings, it's become increasingly clear that the school board is not, quote, "listening to parents." There have been an overwhelming number of parents who want to decide for themselves if their children should wear a mask at school. And even through the opt-out, though, even though the opt-out option is available, parents are still fighting for their right to choose because of the school board threatening to take it away and because the opt-out is full of arbitrary rules that doesn't completely opt their child out of wearing a mask at school. Kids that are opted out are told to put on their masks to sing in music class and given a special mask that has a hole in it to wear while playing the recorder. They put their mask on to walk to the lunchroom, but take it off to eat around everyone they just walked with to get there. All these exceptions and more are completely asinine. Also, on the mask opt-out form, the school board was determined to make sure that they would not be held liable for any harm done to children due to the parent's decision to opt them out. However, they refused to comment on their accountability and liability of any physical or mental harm due to forced mask use. The school board should be considering other potential health and developmental issues mask use may be causing. Wearing a mask does not stop a virus, however, it does harbor harmful bacteria, other viruses, and causes impaired cognition, prevents a child from distinguishing faces, and negatively affects their social and emotional learning. In an article published on www.nbcboson.com, Governor Sununu stated, quote, "It's important to be back in a normal atmosphere so kids, especially young kids, can see their teacher's mouth, can interact in the right way, don't feel the restrictions or under any constraints of wearing a mask for eight hours a day," end quote. Forcing students and staff to wear a mask is hindering the children's learning environment. I'm already seeing my second grader struggle and it is very concerning to me. The school board is basing the mask policy on the number of COVID cases and recommendations from the CDC. But according to the New Hampshire COVID-19 Response website, not a single person under the age of 19 has died from COVID in our state. Also, the CDC and doctors can recommend all they want, but it's up to the individual to agree with or decline medical advice. How is this virus any different from the flu, common cold, strep, et cetera, circulating through the schools? Why are we still fighting about forcing mask use? It specifically says on the box of masks that they do not prevent the spread of COVID-19 or other viruses. Vaccinated and unvaccinated people are spreading and contracting the virus, but it is over 99% survivable regardless of age. There's no one-size-fits-all solution regarding mask use and it is impossible for the school board to decide what the best option is for each student and staff member. For the people that feel so strongly that every single student and staff member should be wearing a mask, how would you feel if your opinion didn't matter and everyone was deciding that you can't wear a mask? It goes both ways. Make mask use completely optional for students and staff. In doing so, in doing so allows everyone their constitutional right to make medical decisions for themselves and eliminates the accountability of the school board from causing any unnecessary mental or physical harm or harassment toward anyone due to forced mask use. And I believe we are caught up.
I think we're probably all set. All right, good. Okay, and we're good in the mailbox as well. All right, we will move on to recognitions, item number three. Do we have any? Okay, next is informational updates, the superintendent update, please.
Yes, I want to thank our HR Director Melissa Faslick, who worked with Rite Aid and as Robbie mentioned, and as information went home to families on Friday, there will be a vaccination, a vaccine clinic for students and staff of our school district. And that will be on December 16th, Thursday, December 16th and Thursday, January 6th. So the 16th will be the first dose, January 6th will be the second dose. The Pfizer vaccine will be available for children ages five and up. And the Pfizer booster vaccine will be available for anyone over 18, who are 18 and over, excuse me, who have been vaccinated and who have had a six-month period between the booster and their second vaccination. That clinic will run from four o'clock to seven o'clock in the evening. Okay, so that's December 16th and January 6th, from four to seven. It will be held at Merrimack High School Cafeteria. Checking with Melissa this morning, there were already about 135 people who have been, who have registered for that clinic. So we thank Melissa and we thank Rite Aid for sponsoring the clinic. From the Master Cola Elementary School, they are sponsoring a Mighty Max toy drive for Children's Hospital, starting at the present time through December 18th. So we congratulate them on doing their part to help children in Children's Hospital at this time of year. They had an anti-bullying contest, which was won by Nora Campbell in grade six and Macy Nguyen in grade five. The poster theme and slogan was "Bully Free Starts With Me," which is a great slogan. As you know, one of the pieces of bullying legislation over the past five, 10 years, talks about the importance of, of not only people intervening, but upstanders and those who do their best to try and prevent bullying behavior. And Kathy Goodman, one of the teachers at JMU's, received an honor recently. And I'm going to just read a little bit from the C Science Center. "We're excited to let you know that a grateful family in Merrimack has chosen to recognize one of your teachers, Kathy Goodman, as a teacher who has made an impact." Quoting, "Kathy is an amazing teacher who goes above and beyond every year. She creates amazing relationships with not only her students, but their entire families. She is extremely humble and will often let others take credit for her accomplishments and contributions to the JMU's community. Every child should be so lucky to have a teacher like Kathy Goodman." So congratulations, Kathy. This organization has, will be giving her a Krista McAuliffe coin. A special award announcement on social media will be forthcoming. An invitation to a celebration at the C Science Center on May 3rd for National Teacher Appreciation Week. So great staff, doing wonderful things for our students. The Merrimack Middle School had fall play on November 19th and 20th, the first live performances since the fall of 2019. The Theater Arts Group presented the Legend of Sleepy Hollow and it was amazingly well-done. From the high school, Band and Chorus Winter Concert will be December 15th with a snow date of the 16th. The theater play, Give and Take, will be conducted on December 17th, that's Friday, and Saturday, December 18th. And the high school students and staff are also participating in the annual Giving Tree to provide some Merrimack families with support for the upcoming holidays. So, you know, organizational support from the community and back to the community, giving back. And so that's what this school system is all about and a lot of the staff. And so we appreciate it very much. And I think I've mentioned everything that I wanted to mention.
Any questions? All right, thank you for the update. Next is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Hello, everybody. We have been, we have put together or reestablished some committees. It's a little bit challenging with the lack of subs to get teachers to be working on curriculum committees. But right now, we have opened up or reopened up the Social Studies Revision Committee, the Health Committee for Revisions, and the World Language Curriculum for Revision. So those things, those are ongoing and anticipate some updates in April, between April, May and June, with hopefully bringing final products forward to the board. And the high school is actively working on their, their NIASK visit for April and will be presenting to the board a vision of a graduate through that work. Thank you.
Great, any questions? Next is Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Thank you very much. As you, as you probably know, the Woodbury Street repaving and sidewalk is completed. It, it really looks like it was, it was done exceedingly well. We thank the town of Merrimack for that and their efforts. Just the mere fact that we cleared out all those trees from in front of the, the greenhouse allows you more of a scenic vista of the, of the campus as it stands right now. So, but it does really kind of look, look a lot better. It looks a lot cleaner. So that's kind of like a step one. The LED lighting project that probably everybody's forgotten about, that we signed off on last year, is coming along very nicely. If you go in the high school parking lot of Merrimack High School, you'll see the LED lights up there. The old entrance that was used for adult ed and for the budget committee meeting was very dark and now it's bright and shiny and the parking lot is very well-done. Some of the schools are, are finished, are completed. And as well as the ventilation project from Honeywell is probably around 50% complete right now. So that's, that's pretty good news. I'll give you more details on that later, but this is just a quick update to let you know that things are still moving along. Thanks.
Thank you. The school board update, I think just to follow on yours, is that we have our budget books tonight. So we're just beginning the budget process. So that will kick off, you know, over the next few weeks and is, I believe our schedule is online.
Yeah, yes, it's published.
So that, yeah, the budget schedule is online, so.
And the, the books are behind you over here. So when you leave, you can pick one up and didn't want to give them to you before the meeting because you'd have the tendency to look through everything and not listen to anything that, that we have to say. As we have done in the past. Marge, Marge Chaffrey has taught me well.
We can't wait.
Yes, that's correct. So that, that's something to, to look forward to, the, the budget deliberations. And we're, we're, for better or worse, we're ready to go, so.
Okay, in a long those lines, I'm going to need questions. I, I will follow with the board members individually, just to make sure that we get the right questions teed up for the right review sessions. So I'll go back, look at that schedule and touch base with you individually regarding that. So sometime in the next day or two, I'll reach out to you.
And, and one last thing, if I may, I meant to say this. Everything that's in the budget book is all queued up and tomorrow morning, it's all ready to be posted. I just got an email from Allison Huckins, says she has it in the queue. And by tomorrow morning, she'll hit the button and it'll all be posted online.
Okay, thank you. Any questions there, for either me or Matt? All right.
Well, just, I think playing off of contacting us individually, you probably, you know, want to set when we do have that feedback ready for the department heads that are coming to our table because they're going to be, it's December 20th is our first one, which is our next meeting and that's going to be all the elementaries, upper elementary and food service. And then it's going to be the third, fourth, 11th and 13th, and that's pretty quick. So I'm assuming that you're going to need at least through the fourth before the holiday break. I would think before we even meet on the 20th, you would need all of it. But I think for the 20th, you probably need that by
Like this week?
The end of this week, yeah. Just to give them time to read through our questions and, and if any research needs to be happening, that they have the time to do that. So the 20th, I would say we would need to do by the end of this week. And then the stuff for the third and the fourth, I would think they would need before the break. So they would probably need it by the 17th.
That makes sense, and I'll just follow up
Yep.
individually and summarize that.
You bet.
Just so that we give our staff plenty of time to prepare for any questions that we have. Okay, Student Representative Update, Caitlin?
Thank you. I want to start off by saying thank you to all of the National Honor Society students that helped with Lee Ferry Gang, like two weeks ago, I think it was. We went around to houses and helped rake the lawns of people who have participated in the school district and done a lot of service for the school district to give back to them because they've helped us a lot over the years. And National Honor Society also has a upcoming drive for the Webster House in Manchester and that's a care facility for children who are unable to live with their parents or their family. And we're doing toy donations for them for Christmas. And I think that's it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Onto old business, the Health and Safety Task Force update.
Relatively, excuse me, a relatively brief update this evening. Very pleased to say that the Master Cola Elementary School is back to the optional, opt-out masking policy. If you recall, prior to the last meeting where we made a revision to the policy, they were in excess of 5% of the total number of occupants who tested positive. They are now down to 2.58%. So as of today, the opt-out mask policy went back into effect at Master Cola and it is still in effect in all of the other schools. Reed's Ferry is at about 1.9% of the total occupants testing positive. Thornton's Ferry, 1.42%. The Upper Elementary, 1.8%. Middle School, .77%. And the High School, 1.34%. You know, the data for Merrimack from the state is indicating an increase in COVID activity. The rate, the rate of new cases per 100,000 the last 14 days is over 1,100. It's 1,134, which is about three times what it was about two and a half months ago. The antigen and PCR test positivity rate over a seven-day period is 18.2%. Now, that was as low as about 5% about two and a half months ago. So still a lot of activity, but we're trying to keep the school environment as safe as possible. I thank the staff, I thank the students, I thank the families for, for working carefully to help us maintain a safe environment, keep the students in school and the staff in classrooms where they all belong.
Thank you. Any questions there? Old business number two, potential enrollment impact from residential development.
Yes, I wanted to provide you with the, some preliminary data, once again, on the scope of residential development in the, in the town. This is one of the most active communities in New Hampshire because it's an attractive community. It's located on the highway, it's got a great school system, excellent population of, of residents. And it attracts development, attracts business development, which in return attracts residential development. So I presented you with a, with a chart. And the estimates of enrollment are from the town, from the Town Merrimack Department of Community Development. That was a report that was issued, I believe, last year. Very well-done, where they apply certain ratios based on the type of residential development, whether it's a single-standing residence, a townhome, clustered condominiums or apartment complexes. And so the, you know, the impact, the estimated impact is about another 341 students. I've indicated to you the elementary school districts in which those developments fall and the estimated enrollments will occur. However, just a cautionary statement, a couple of cautionary statements about that. First of all, we don't know what the demographics of families will be moving into Merrimack. We know that a majority of them will probably have elementary school students. What I've seen in the last five to six years, now this happened to be in Massachusetts, but what I observed is a lot of families moving into communities with families, with children, excuse me, who are in the upper elementary grade levels, tending not to move into communities in, with children in the preschool, kindergarten and primary, primary grade levels. Now, that, that can change. There are families who move also with students who are in middle school and, and high school. And so I don't want to give you the impression that 341 estimated new students will all come in the elementary level. I think a majority of them will, but, but not all. So we don't know the grade distribution. And we have to keep in mind that these are estimates, okay? I know that in the past, I looked at a very, very high number of apartment units in a community in which I used to work. We thought it would have an overwhelming impact on the school system. It did not, for one reason or another. It all depends on the type and the configuration, particularly apartment complexes and condominium developments. Some of the surrounding amenities make a difference. And so what we, what we'll keep an eye on is the grade distribution. And so what we, what we'll keep an eye on is the grade distribution. We will keep an eye on the rate of occupancy. Economic conditions such as jobs, interest rates can either facilitate or delay movements of families. So we will keep an eye on what the trends are there. We'll be in constant contact with the principals. We also are interested in looking at what I call is the secondary enrollment impact or the second wave impact where our apartment developments in a community such as Merrimack being occupied to a certain extent by empty nesters who occupy single-family homes in Merrimack, who are now moving out of those homes to have less maintenance, a little bit less living space. And their homes may very well be occupied by families with school-aged children. So there can be a delayed effect also. Now, sometimes that's not as, as great in terms of the magnitude and direct impact on the school system, but it can have an impact down, down the road. What I've noticed over the years in terms of many residential developments that do tend to attract families with school-aged children is that it sometimes will take three to five years for those developments to fully express the equilibrium level of enrollment increase. That doesn't happen immediately. So, you know, if somebody builds 100 homes, that doesn't necessarily mean that 50 children are going to move into Merrimack right now. It may, may take a few years for that to show up. So demographics is always very interesting, always bears close watching because we don't want to be surprised having, you know, more students in a particular school than that school has the capacity to hold. So, you know, Matt and I and the principals, along with Kim and others, will, will be talking about this on a regular basis and keeping a careful eye on it.
Questions? Well, thank you very much for that update.
But before you go to new business, do you have a question on this?
I do have a question.
Okay, no, I have a question on old business before we went to new, but it's a different topic.
Oh, different, oh, yeah, I'm on this topic.
Okay, go, sorry.
I just was wondering, and maybe this is something that could be done over the next couple of months, but Gilbert Crossing and Executive Park have been full for a year at capacity. I know my parents looked for places there. But I was wondering if we might be able to just check, cross-check and get a baseline of what we do have already in our district. It might give us at least a baseline to look towards as we see, does it go up? Does it, does it stay the same? And then using that same comparison as these complete.
Yes, we'll do that. Lori, we, we will be working with the Power School Student Information Database Program. We have the streets that are associated with all these developments. And so we just simply look that up right now and as we go along to determine what the impact is and what the grade level of each student is so that we get a somewhat better profile of who is moving into Merrimack and what is the, kind of the demographic of the failing.
Any other questions?
Just on old business, but not this.
Okay, on old business?
I just noticed that we didn't have, we had our CIP presentation, but we did not have a CIP work session and vote tonight on our agenda. And that we usually do that going into budgeting. So as we get presentations, as it impacts the buildings, we would have normally reviewed that prior to having any budget hearings. So I'm wondering if it's going to be put on an agenda before we actually review the buildings and which they would impact.
More than likely, we would do that because the majority of the CIP, you know, we're talking about a roof and then we're talking about the repaving of O'Gara Drive and the sidewalk. And so if we could do that before Tom Tousot comes here. The one roof is Thornton's Ferry. Thornton's Ferry is already aware that it's on the capital improvement program. So we could feather that into the, the next school board meeting and have that done. And when Tom Tousot comes the next time to talk about his budget, we can talk about the impact of not doing Thornton's Ferry roof, et cetera.
It's gonna be a long night.
Yeah, well, you know, we have some written reports already for you guys, so.
Great. Okay, are you good?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
So I'm just wondering if we could, before the next meeting, get a projection? I know we have some of those numbers of class sizes, number of teachers in all schools, class sizes for every school, and a projection if we're going to need teachers in certain buildings based on what you presented tonight.
We will, we'll be glad to provide that to you. We have worked on the elementary in the last week and a half. So we have that, all that information in terms of moving the students forward. A year, projecting number of staff. We met with the principals, Kim, Matt, Melissa, and the principals and I met last week to, because we wanted to wait until we had the latest numbers. And so we feel confident. We know exactly how many staff we have at the present time. We don't anticipate any additional elementary staff. And I will present you, I have all the numbers from the middle school and the high school also. I'll present that information to you additionally.
Usually when we do the enrollment projections, it's part of the budget book and it's in there right now. But usually we use the October 1st numbers, but we chose to use the November 10th numbers. So it's the most up to date. And they did change a little bit from October 1st, maybe five kids extra. You know, with all these new developments and everything like that, it is, it's going to take a while for them to generate a lot of kids because we've run the streets of Gilbert, Gilbert Crossing and everything like that. And there's not a whole heck of a lot coming out of those developments right now. And in talking with the town and, you know, that's going to be coming, but it's not going to be coming as, as quick as we think it's going to be coming. And, you know, once you get out past a couple of years as far as projections, we've always said that's when it gets a little more difficult because that's when you have, as Bill was talking about, the churn of people going into apartments versus single-family homes opening up. And that takes a while to kind of manifest itself and a big increase in enrollment. But if there is one, it's more or less currently, right now, probably looking at the elementary school level. But then again, as the churn comes, it could go up grade levels, so.
So to clarify, it is already, what Lori asked for is already built in our budget books?
Yes.
Okay, good. When she asked, I was afraid it wasn't there this year for the first time, so.
Which is a nice segue into new business, which is the overview of proposed 2022, 2023 school district budget.
Yes, thank you. And I, I first want to start off by thanking Matt, who I, I think is one of the finest school business officials you'll, you'll find anywhere in any school system. He put an extraordinary amount of work into this, as he has done every year. I know that from talking with people and both in the school system and in the community. And I thank Kim and Matt for helping me with the budget message at the beginning of the, of the budget book. We've tried to paint a little bit of a picture of the complexity of school budgeting. You know, lots of people look at budget documents over each year in annual budget submitted and reviews and, and look at numbers. But it's always important to think about what's behind those numbers. And I always like to use a quote by Dr. Thomas Armstrong, who's a noted author and lecturer internationally. And Dr. Armstrong, back a number of years ago, mentioned that the challenge of budgeting in education is that a budget represents, and I'm going to quote here, "The quantification of developing the means and the capacity to facilitate human development with respect for each student's particular style and rate of learning, as well as an appreciation for the varied interests, aspirations, capacities, obstacles, temperaments, and backgrounds that serve as a same framework within each child." So the challenge every year is to understand the current academic, social, emotional, developmental needs of our students, but it's also to understand the needs of our staff. Because budgeting involves two very important constituents. Number one, the students. We need to understand what their interests, what the impediments are to, to learn, what their needs are, both currently and what is emerging. And so we've tried to do that. We've tried to understand what those students' needs are by going around to each and every school and talking with every staff member. And they have appreciated that very much. I've received a number of emails from the staff indicating that, you know, it's been, it's been a while since we've been asked questions about student needs, about our needs. And they, and that's no fault of anyone. That's just, that's our style. And we enjoy doing it. And so Matt and, and Kim and I did a roadshow for several weeks listening to the staff. And we had some interesting comments that, that were made. And first of all, I will say I'm very impressed with the staff we have in Merrimack and their understanding of student needs. But going beyond that, we also need to address the key element in our school system, and that is the staffing in each building, those people who are closest to our students. We want to make sure that we're able to, through the, through our negotiations and therefore through budgeting, present a budget to you that allows us to attract, retain, and train qualified staff, highly qualified staff. Because the quality of our school system is very much dependent upon the quality of teachers in front of children. It's the quality of teachers and it's reasonable class size. So there's a connection between, and a significant connection between a staff member and a child in each and every classroom. So we listened to the comments of the staff. We listened to the comments of our leadership team. We listened to your input in developing the priorities that you would like to see addressed. And in the development of a, of a budget in any school system, but in ours in particular, we look to address a number of issues. And I think many people don't really think of all of these elements in the construct of a budget. First and foremost, we don't just simply engage in incremental budgeting. If you gave us $10 million this year, give us 12 million next year and we'll do great things. Well, that doesn't, that doesn't work. We look for opportunities for savings and efficiencies in the delivery of instructional support services and in the conduct of operations and ancillary services. We look carefully at current and student enrollments to make sure that we can anticipate that we can meet the capacity needs of enrollments in every single school district. And don't wind up in an emergency situation because emergency situations are more costly in, in nature. We have to comply with state and federal mandates, whether they be special education, whether they be Americans with Disabilities Act, et cetera. Or environmental standards. We have to comply with those. We want to make sure that in a town such as Merrimack and most other communities, that students are able to go to school safely and come home safely. And that means transportation services. There are very few walkers anymore in local communities throughout the country. Years ago, 50 years ago, there were lots of walkers. Now, conditions are much more dangerous and busing is the way to go and is a crucial support service. We have to be in compliance, as I said, with the Individuals with Disabilities Act. Okay? We want to commit to a robust curriculum. We want to commit to professional development. And so our staff is trained, okay, in the latest methodologies and pedagogy. We want to make sure that we provide adequate levels of technology, but also the training to use technology. Years ago, 30 years ago, we thought that, well, just put a computer in front of a staff member and magic will happen. Well, many staff members didn't know what to do. Because, you know, technology is an example of you don't know what you don't know. And so it's important for us to make sure that we have an understanding, bring an understanding to the staff of what different application software, what different capabilities of technology are applied, when applied to various curriculum disciplines in our school system. We want to make sure that in the development of a budget, we adequately provision for a variety of materials and supplies that allow us to differentiate instruction because we all learn at different rates. We all have different, different abilities and passions. And we want to make sure our staff is adequately provisioned to meet a number of learner needs. One of the things that's very important, that sometimes people fail to remember, is that when a new school opens, it doesn't just run automatically for 20 years without any need for maintenance. And we take great pride, if you go through the schools in Merrimack, they're some of the cleanest, most well-kept schools I know that I've, I've ever been in. And kudos to the custodial maintenance staff. They've done a superb job in keeping clean, healthy, safe buildings. Something we never had to worry about years ago that we do now is school security. We've been meeting once again with the principals to just review school safety plans, which kind of went on the back burner last year with different alternative instructional arrangements, either full-time home, part-time home, in and out. Well, there are lots of other issues that COVID brought to us, but right now, and as we saw in a school, in a community, in another part of the country in the last couple of weeks, another tragedy. And we want to make sure that we, we meet our obligations to our students and our staff to have as much safety built into our schools as, not only into, into secure systems, but our practices also. We want to make sure that we, we recognize the quality of our staff through appropriate collective bargaining. But also, we recognize our, our responsibility to taxpayers, okay, to make sure that we are providing competitive wages, competitive working conditions and benefits, okay, within the norm, okay, within the reason. And, and we have done that. Once again, our commitment to professional development will be ongoing throughout the year, extraordinarily important. One of the things that we have addressed in this budget, and I'll get a little bit more into the specifics in a minute, is co-curricular activities. Those are activities that allow students to express their passion, their innovative skills, their creative thought, and to connect once again after school. Instead of being out and about, they keep kids together and bond, which is extraordinarily important. And they learn through the co-curricular activities. We want to make sure that we can make a commitment to reasonable class size because that is extraordinarily important, particularly at the elementary level. And once again, and Matt has, as you know, has done a superb job with this over the years, we want to make sure we have a responsible capital improvement plan that addresses issues before they happen and not wait until emergencies occur. Because once again, sometimes you make costly decisions when you don't be proactive, but you're reactive in terms of maintenance. So we've tried to provide a budget that addresses also your, your priorities. We have, we've incorporated in there monies for a behavior specialist at Master Cola Elementary School. Here's that, is an elementary school that did not have a behavior specialist. We have budgeted monies for enhanced programming for social, emotional well-being at the elementary, middle and high school levels. We have budgeted monies for co-curricular activities at the middle school and now at the elementary level because those activities at the elementary begin that developmental process and that creative, innovative focus because children are allowed to select activities that they have a particular passion for. Okay? So that there are a number of areas, I could go on and on and on, but we've tried to take a look at what our needs are. Our needs of students, once again, our needs of staff. And try to put together a budget that reflects what we heard from staff, what we heard from administrators, and the priorities that we heard, heard from you. The budget we have submitted is $83,439,157. That's 83, 439, 157. Now, that is $264,696 above the default budget. I understand that that's, you know, an increase over what has probably been historically submitted in the past. But it does come with time. We need to make some progress. You need to kind of make some breakthroughs in terms of budgeting in certain areas. And I think that's I think that's, I think that's what we've been able to do, by honoring our collective bargaining agreements, providing essential services, providing some after-school activities for children, for enhancing our social, emotional effort in the school system, because that is extraordinarily rapidly growing area that we have needed to address and will continue to need to, to address. And so I look forward with Matt and Kim and others and our leadership team of discussing it with you. We'll be glad to answer. When you put together your questions, we'll be glad to answer all those questions as thoroughly as we possibly can, because we want you to be informed. We want this whole process to continue to be transparent. We want the community to understand what's in this, in this budget and the importance of it. And so with that, there are a lot of numbers, as you know, because you've, you've been at this much longer in Merrimack than I have, but lots of numbers to look at, and we'll provide you with the information that is behind those numbers, so you can develop that understanding of what we're doing and where we, where we need to continue to go in the future.
Any initial comments, questions? Lori?
So first of all, I'm really happy that you gave teachers a voice and, you know, ownership. It gives them pride in the process. And then the other thing that struck me is when you talked about differentiating instruction and giving students opportunities to take advantage of different pathways, such as like the CTE programs, you know, we want all students to be college and career-ready, so any different pathway that's going to help that student reach achievement is something that I think we need to always stay focused on. So thank you for that.
Anything else? Lori?
I'm really looking forward to getting my budget book, so I can look in it, because one of the things that I really want to look at again is, you know, bridging that gap that COVID created. And I think one of the best decisions that happened was expansion of that summer program at all levels and time. And I think that is something that, that really we should continue long haul. So just looking forward to those things. I know that there's a number of us that have a couple of other questions that don't need to be addressed tonight, but we're looking forward to taking a look. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
And I, I echo that. Thank you very much. This is a lot of work to compile this, get it to us, and I'm also very eager to dig in and look at, and prepare my questions and to continue to have those discussions as we embark on the budget process. So thanks so much.
Yeah, and we are looking to cooperatively work with you guys as in the past and get, get to the endpoint, you know? It's, it's all about teamwork and this is our team. So we're ready for you and we will answer your questions and we will work together to get to a solution at the end that's agreeable to everybody. And that's the whole point.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Cindy, are we going to have a template again this year for providing questions to administration, so they get in the same format?
I can send that.
That'd be great.
Okay. Now we're on to the approval of minutes. Approval of the November 15th, 2021 minutes. Do I have a motion made by Shannon, second? Made by Jenna. Any updates?
I missed new business?
No, it says, um, this is the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So under new business?
No.
I have two things.
No, wait.
Okay.
No. Okay. We're on the minutes. We're on the approval of the minutes.
You never had other, you never declared other.
Oh.
You never asked if there was other new business?
Okay. Gotcha. I'm sorry.
I think that's what she's getting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Lori, I'm sorry. Yes, new business. New business.
So I'll hold my motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
So first of all, I'm hoping that we can, at the next meeting, talk about the task force, forming a parent group to work with us to engage our community and bring positive change to our schools. I'm hoping that the task force can be goal-driven, results-driven, and support us in what we're trying to accomplish. I think one of the important things that we're trying to accomplish right now, a priority might be to get our teachers' contract passed. And I think having a task force who can work with our community on the reasons that we need this contract to pass, whether they have, you know, coffee, teas, posters, like there's so much, and that would really support what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm hoping that's something that we can add to the agenda. And then under new business, also, something that we, we'd like to talk about is directing our superintendent to draft a administrator's evaluation that would be goal-oriented, simple, results-driven, again, a self-devaluation for administrators and leadership, with leadership input. And I know that we're in the middle of the budget season, so maybe, you know, by the February meeting, we could have some kind of draft and, you know, see what that looks like from the leadership team.
Thank you. Shannon?
Just a question of clarification. Do we still have the district parent group in, established in the district? Because that was in place for many, many years. So we've had that in place for decades.
That, I'm gonna have to check.
It was run by the superintendent, so before, obviously COVID could have changed that greatly, obviously parents being able to get together, but it was something that was in place for decades, that actually had parents throughout the district, and it would actually be a lot of the district parent group leadership that would have that, those communication portals to their parent groups that were the kind of leads for the different buildings. So I love what Lori's asking for, that district parent group's architecture could handle, but I think some of the tasks she's talking about would be probably things that weren't necessarily always addressed in that district parent group, because I think, Cindy, you've been on it, I've been on it.
Have you been on it, Jenna?
In name only.
Oh, because of COVID. Okay, yep. But yeah, so that's something where it was established quarterly meeting throughout the year.
Oh, okay. I will definitely look into that this week.
And maybe just taking those initiatives that Lori wants addressed, and you could take that infrastructure and expand it.
Well, and I think that makes sense, and if it means, you know, more meetings than, because typically that group would meet like...
Yep, once a quarter.
Exactly.
It was.
Like the 30th of September, the, you know, near the end of the, yep. So, and I think that's a great idea, Jenna.
I just had one last thing. I, I think new business is the right place to mention this, but, you know, in light of this new wave of school security issues, I would love for us to explore, I, I had heard, and again, like, you know, with the pandemic and everything, I can't remember the last time I was on a school board meeting, and, you know, before I was on the board, and just how I know this piece of information, or even if this piece of information I'm about to say is accurate. But I think at some point, we evaluated, the district evaluated the possibility of us using Alice training within our district for staff and students to keep them safe in school. And as I was watching the events in Michigan play out and seeing the videos of the students, it was very clear that this, the, it was very clear that the, the students there were trained in Alice, because you could see how they were reacting. They were using Alice strategies, which I have only just recently learned because of where I work. And so I was hoping that we might be able to review that and relook at that again. I don't, my understanding, and again, I could be wildly mistaken, my understanding was there was a point where the Merrimack Police were willing to work with us on that, and that did not happen, but I would like the opportunity for us to all look at that again, whether it's in partnership with the Merrimack Police, them coming to present what that is and why that would benefit us, how we could make it happen, because I think it is one good first step in making our schools more secure and safe for students and staff.
We've started to have that conversation. Very familiar with the Alice procedure. We've had a conversation that I'm going to bring to the leadership team on Wednesday of this week also, about, once again, having, during the summer, sort of a full-scale mock evaluate, evacuation, excuse me, and all of the procedures that are to be followed and the processes, working with the police department and the fire department on that. You know, you can never be overtrained when it comes to school, school safety. I've participated directly in the Alice drills. I'd like, quite honestly, once we begin those, I don't have a date, but we'll continue to talk about bringing Alice training to Merrimack. It's important the school, school board members participate also, so that you know exactly what the program is all about. Now, can it guarantee the safety of everyone? Of course not. Nothing, nothing we can do, can do that, but bit by bit, in terms of looking at the envelope of the buildings, the admittance procedures, you know, procedures within a building in terms of stopping someone who's unrecognizable, who doesn't have appropriate, you know, badges or security clearance documentation, lots and lots and lots of, of issues. One of the important things is what we do in terms of evacuating from a facility, going to a, an evacuation site, the orderly and the safe dismissal of students, the accounting for students and staff members, how law enforcement plays into that in terms of communications, in terms of press conferences. So we've begun that conversation. I was just meeting with, with the administration over at the upper elementary school last week to begin the conversation, and we'll bring it up again in, in fact, Steve Clare, high school interim principal, last week's leadership team meeting, expressed an interest, and we said, you know, we will, we will convene a safety committee once again and bring about Alice training and just renew everyone's, everyone's orientation to what we need to do, knowing that some people will, will not be able to follow, you know, what we're hoping, but that's understandable, okay? But a number of others will, and we will conduct ourselves so that we can represent the school system, represent the students and the staff well in terms of trying to be as safe as possible, so.
To be clear, I just want, I just want to say that I'm, I definitely want all of the staff trained in Alice, but I also want us to do something similar to what other districts is, we're not training just the staff and how to respond in an, in an Alice manner, that we're training our staff and then we run our drills within our building so that we're teaching our students as well. Because even, even having conversations with my own children, you know, after this incident, you know, I'm saying, well, you know, if this were to ever happen, what would you do? And they were saying, well, this is what we would do, like at school, we would do this. And I was like, no, 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 no. I'm going to tell you something else. Sorry.
Yeah, the training, the training will involve everyone.
Yeah, that's, that's what my hope is, that we get formalized Alice training for our staff and our, and that's the, we start doing Alice drills in our buildings as opposed to, you know, just a lockdown or whatever, that, that sort of thing. That's what I'm hoping we can look at adopting. And it's, I just wanted to, I wasn't for sure that you were saying that, or if you were just saying, just train this staff.
No, no.
Okay.
No, it has to be, it has to be both students.
Yes.
It has to be everyone in the building, all the occupants.
A hundred percent.
In fact, when I first started here, it was interesting to learn that one of the members of the Merrimack Police Department, Justin Agra, Justin used to be our school resource officer in Westford about five or six years ago. And so, and Justin, what we always have done, and what we'll do here, is use our school resource officers as those lead people to work with our staff and students and all of the building occupants on, on the Alice training.
I have one thing too.
Go ahead.
So I, I would also just, going back with Jenna just said, is, I know that Merrimack also uses, you know, the program, you know, see something, say something, and so just a reminder that, you know, those posters get ripped and torn, and if we can just make sure that, you know, we have them everywhere, so students know if something's going on, where to report it. I think that's all, all the proactive work is really good work.
That's, that's an excellent point, Lori. What we have emphasized with the leadership team is the behaviors that are consistent with acts of school violence and have sometimes triggered acts of school violence. There are a long list that, I think I presented them to you a while back, but those are key. You know, that old adage, you see something, say something, is extraordinarily important. And not only with respect to students, but, you know, sometimes staff members have dramatic and radical changes in their lives that can precipitate some sort of behavioral issue. And so, you know, it applies to everyone, you know, changes in dress, changes of behavior, in demeanor, in attendance, in the, the circle of friends, the online communications, is extraordinarily important to pay attention to. And so all of those things are very important in terms of us being alert and trying to protect our students and our staff.
Cindy?
Lori? Totally affirm, Bill, the Alice training. I'm on my second year of it at our school. We do a training in the summer with an intruder, full training, and it's very different than what parents have learned in the past. So I think that's important and ongoing every year, and then with our students, and, and I'm very proud of our students that they get trained for it. And it's just like the military, you just go back to your training and it gets you through that adrenaline and that shock of what's happening. But I also, and again, I don't know what has been done this year, because so much has been focused on getting back to school, but just a reiteration of de-escalation in the classroom training. There has been a huge increase nationwide of in-classroom incidents. My goodness, there's a ton of TikToks out there with the video of them. But self-regulation is becoming a major issue coming out of the pandemic, and I think teachers and staff, it's not always an, it's not always somebody coming from the outside in. It can happen inside the classroom. And just those warning signs of a student about to go right over the edge, de-escalation, standing between the student and other students, just some of those refresher practice skills on what would happen, because we, we do have students whose anxiety, anger, frustration is really high right now. And so for the safety of everyone, be a good reminder, depending on where you've put that in your professional development rotation.
I, I will tell you that I've had a good meeting, in fact, when I first started here, with the chief and deputy chief in terms of the commitment to school safety. And so they're completely on board with us and welcome the opportunity to work with us.
Thank you, and that's a great point, Lori. Oh.
Thank you.
I was just, I was just going to say that I just very much appreciate the partnership that we have with the Merrimack Police Department and how much they always look out for the safety of the community and our, the, the children and staff of our schools, so. And Kim, did you have one thing you wanted to add?
Yes, in response to Lori's question, we, part of our professional development is we use CPI, the Crisis Prevention Intervention, and we have started, again, substitutes can be really, really difficult for us to be able to get the staff trained, but we've been doing refresher courses around that, so that we can really look at not, not necessarily a big, huge incident, but those small incidents that cause anxiety for, for children in the classroom. So that is a part of our professional development rotation. I appreciate you mentioning that.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, I'll take that motion back.
I'll remove, if you want to resecond, Jenna?
Sure, resecond.
Okay. Any changes to the November 15th minutes? I have a couple while you guys are looking. At the beginning, it says that Board Member Peters was present, but then underneath it says she was excused. She should just be removed from present and leave the Board Member Peters excused.
I think that's for the non-public. I was present for the non-public.
Oh, that's the non-public. Okay. You're right.
I thought the same thing and then looked over it.
You're right, because it just looked, I don't know. It didn't, doesn't seem like it, but our non, oh, wait, the non-public.
It was before at 6:00.
Usually we have that on a separate paper.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have these in the packet yet.
Yep.
The non-public.
Okay.
Just the publics. So basically, I guess, can I suggest the edit that we have a separate document for non-public and just say 7:00 PM, being called to order and Board Member Peters not present? Make that the edit?
Yeah, because that's, because that's not consistent with, I think, how we usually do them.
Correct.
That's why it was.
Yeah, so this, yeah, so then in that case, then my edit would still stand. All right. And I think that's all I have. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One? Is there?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so then it passes 410?
Was there an abstention, because she was not present? So is it 311? So is it 311?
Well, I rushed the video and went through the minutes.
Oh, never mind, okay.
Okay, okay. So then it's 310?
Yes.
Okay.
410, 410.
Four, 410. 410, sorry. All right, next is the approval of the November 18th minutes.
So moved?
Made by Shannon, second by Lori Peters. Any changes? I see none. I have two. I was just going to suggest adding the time when Board Member Rothaus arrived to the meeting. I did state in the minutes that she would arrive after a work commitment, but we don't have the time she arrived, which was very shortly after I made that statement. And then, secondly, on line 44, Sarah Locke, she recently wrote us an email, so I have a, she has an E at the end of her last name. And that's, that's all I have. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, zero, that's 500. And then next is the consent agenda, item number eight.
I have two resignations to announce. Assistant Principal Shawna DeMore at the middle school has tendered her letter of resignation effective December 22nd, 2021. And we have a letter from a social studies high school teacher, Luke Woods, who has also tendered a resignation effective December 16th, 2021.
Okay, do I have a motion? A motion to accept the consent agenda made by Shannon, a second, Jenna? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, none, that's 500. Give some grants under $5,000.
Thank you. This evening, we have two. The first one is to Merrimack High School from.
Did you do this teacher who resigned?
The first one is from Merrimack, to Merrimack High School from Delta Dental in the amount of $250 to be used by Merrimack High School math team for supplies and/or refreshments, sugar-free, by the way, seeing it's from Delta Dental, for students during competition. The next one we have is from Elbit Systems of America for $3,500 to, the donation is to the Merrimack High School robotics team to help purchase the necessary supplies and materials for the upcoming competitions. So we thank Elbit Systems, $3,500, and Delta Dental for 250.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion? Made by Lori Peters and a second by Shannon. Any comments? Shannon?
I will just say thank you to those who have gone to sponsor our programs. It's part of getting back to normal for us. And I know the robotics team, they're just getting toward their competition season because I've had kids do those programs. And they've had some very good competitive seasons and they would not be able to do it without that corporate support. So it takes a lot of money to run those programs and get that equipment. So all, all very, very appreciated.
Absolutely. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that's 500. Next up is other committee reports. Anyone have any committee reports? Shannon?
I covered Parks and Rec on November 17th and we reviewed the budget that they were presenting to the town council. With that, they definitely went over staffing needs and the historical staffing that's been in place in how it was cut years ago. And the restoration with all the programs we have has not been more important. If you've been watching board meetings, you've noticed that when we talk about these, these reports, that the summer camps have been pretty much maximized. So with all of that, they need more support staff to really support the facilities. And then there's a lot of maintenance on buildings that needs to happen as well. And on top of that paving, which of course we know is very expensive, we learned that very much so. And then drainage, because if you know Wasserman's on a hill and a slope. And with all of that, there's a lot of drainage that goes along the roadways toward the beach. And, and so that creates, they're trying to do some work so that it help, that it can be done, the maintenance can be done to be more sustainable. So furthermore, the agricultural commission has disbanded. And with that, they'll be taking over some of the functions that they had. So there's a community garden that was done by them as well as the farmer's market. So on top of all of that, you know, there's, they're being tasked to do more things. And so, you know, we advocated at the meeting for staffing to support that. We know that all of our community benefits from that, but especially when you think about the facilities at Wasserman and the number of students that we have that use those campuses. You know, maintaining those, those properties is paramount to our, to our community. So whatever support we can give, it's definitely going to be appreciated, so. And there was no meeting in December, by the way.
Thank you. Jenna?
So I attended, on November 18th, attended virtually, the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Integration Committee, the CIA. It's the longest name ever, this, anyway. CIA Committee Meeting. And there they were, I was really excited because I got to get a preview of the vision of the graduate, of a graduate that they're putting together for, for us. They're eventually going to be presenting it to us. I don't know if it's going to happen during budget season or after, but whenever it happens, I'm really looking forward to it. It's going to be great. Really something that I think is so important because it helps sort of distill everybody to focus on the things that we most want our graduates to exemplify. And it really just helps, just for vision and mission purposes, to know everybody to be going in the same direction. So they're going to present that and they presented it to us, to the committee, and it looked great. And also, they adopted the online tool and research, or resource and evaluation rubric for any new tools that come forward. And if, so if you, I have a copy of it here, so if you would want it, any of you would want to see it, I have it here and you can certainly take a look should you want to.
Great, thank you. Any other committee reports? Lori Peters?
The Healthcare Cost and Containment Committee met and they are still blessing the teachers with gift cards. They have a special December raffle going on for each school day. They'll be raffling off three $25 Shaw's gift cards and just helping the teachers out, giving them a little bit of a spirit oomph as we continue in this really crazy year.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? I think, I think we're good. We will move on to correspondence. I don't have, I have to go back, to be honest, and really audit through some of the correspondence. We've had a lot of public comments. So anything that I haven't addressed, I will at our next meeting. Any other public comments or any other emails or correspondence that anyone else has received? Separate, outside of the public comments and the emails? Okay. All right, and then number three is comments. Anyone just have any general comments they'd like to make? Okay. And now we are at the public comments on agenda items. Again, I will open it up, open up the floor. Just state your name and address if you have anything else you'd like to say. And seeing none, anything that we have in the mailbox?
Yes. So from Bill Finkston, Jessica Drive. Good evening, all. Since the summer weather is behind us, I figured I would write some heartfelt wording to warm all of our souls. This mask debate is tiring and never-ending. I've added my input, you know where I stand, and my position hasn't changed because they offer no protection. I see that a quote vaccine, end quote, time and place has been established. One, let's stop calling it a vaccine. If it truly was, then cases and deaths will be down. Cases and deaths are not down, so therefore it is not a vaccine. It is a source of income for those who are retiring off of it. Two, efforts are best when the ROI can be seen. A wiser choice would have been for the school system to invest in rapid tests for students who have the sniffles and sent home because of it. Merrimack, come on, let's go. Branding people because of how they view these issues is not right. Let's look at the picture. The pandemic is, in 1918, was over in 1.5 years. Why are we still playing this game? Is it because once power is given, it becomes addictive to those who have it? Best regards, Bill Finkston.
Is, is that the only one?
That's the only one.
Okay, thank you. Then I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA 91-3, colon, 91-A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, A, B, and C. Do I have a motion? Made by Shannon, second, Jenna? Lori Peters, how do you vote?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.